Good afternoon. We're calling to meeting the Boards and Commission Candidate Review Committee, special meeting of Thursday, December 30th, 2021 at 3:04 PM. In attendance, and I will call the role, Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Interim City Clerk.
I'm here.
Josh Decker, oh, sir. And Community Development Director Katrina Knudsen.
Here.
Good afternoon, everybody. Our first candidate is due for 3 o'clock. And we are looking at two people today. And I believe they will fit the category of the two needed for community membership on the Design Review Board. And Katrina, do you have any information for us on Brett Marlowe?
Yes, Councilmember Wook and Councilmember Denson, I've had a discussion with the Chair of the Design Review Board, Brett Marlowe DeSantis. And she informed me, and therefore the city, that she has moved outside of the Gig Harbor area. And therefore was or will be issuing her resignation from the Design Review Board. However, she's graciously accepted an offer to stay on until the position can be filled. And so she still technically is our Design Review Board Chair. And I will need to get a resignation letter from her. But she will be resigning from the Design Review Board.
She didn't want to serve out her term?
Um, no. But she did state that she would stay on until we're able to fully have the board functional.
That's great. That's great. That's very helpful, I'm sure, to you. So, good on her. Good on her. She's an important person, and I'm sorry that she moved out of Gig Harbor.
Yeah, we're very sad to see her go. She's been an excellent member to the Design Review Board, very proactive, very design-focused. And I think a lot of the projects that have been built over the time that she's been on the board have benefited from her having reviewed them.
So when we're replacing her actually today, her position, is that right? Since we're looking for two community members?
I would defer to Josh. The one thing that I would say prior to that is noting that there is one current vacancy and one additional with her leaving. We still do very much need and are looking for someone with a landscape architecture background. And I did reach out to the previous applicant that had that experience, and he was not interested in going for the Design Review Board due to contentiousness of projects. So I will put it that way. I think Parks was a little bit less contentious. And so we still, the department, would like to advocate for having someone with that landscape architecture background.
So Katrina, you're thinking we should just maybe fill one position today and then keep that other position as we look for a landscape architect? Is that what you're saying?
That would be my recommendation at this point in time. I think that, you know, definitely we've heard from the incoming here as well as incoming councilmembers how important trees and landscaping are to the city. And I think having someone with that expertise would definitely assist staff in the city when we're reviewing projects that have to do with tree retention and things of that nature.
Right. We're looking for a landscape architect, but are there other similar fields? Because we've obviously had trouble with this. Like, would a forestry person work? Or is there anything else we can think of that would be similar but not, you know, maybe broaden our market?
Yes. I've started to think about that as well. I want to talk with the Principal Planner Carl DeCemis when he is back from vacation on the 5th, and talk with Josh and Laura about potentially advertising for something that's not as specific as a landscape architecture degree, potentially a forester or an environmental planner, or, you know, something along those lines.
Great.
Great. Yeah, it's hard when we keep looking for a landscape architect and they don't show up. So, nice to broaden that desire a little bit further.
Yes, and that, you know, that whole industry is very swamp right now. We continually hear from consultants that are working on permit projects that they're having a hard time keeping up with demand. So, you know, I think that may be why we're not getting some of those folks is because they're already working a lot of overtime to fulfill the paid work.
Yeah.
Right, and then we're asking them to basically do some amount of work for free.
Yeah.
Because this isn't an easy job. Okay.
But we're up for the challenge. And, you know, with Josh and Laura and, you know, new leadership coming in, I think we can hopefully get some applicants to fill that position.
Well, that's exciting to think about. Goodness knows we need it, for sure. So, yeah. Shall we go into pause for a little bit? You want to stop this until we get an applicant? Do we have anything else for the recording?
I don't have any other business for the committee. I will see if I can get ahold of him and see. I had a verbal confirmation, but he hasn't replied to my email invitation. So I will try to track him down.
Okay. Why don't we? Yes, hello. This is the Boards and Candidates Commission meeting of December 30th. And it is 3:14, and we are reconvening. And we now have an applicant, Vicky Ask... Oh, Vicky. Can you pronounce your last name for me, please? Vicky, you're muted. You might want to try either unmuting or if you're on the phone. There she is. Hi, Vicky, you there?
We have her unmuted, but I'm not hearing her.
We see you. Hi, Vicky. We can't hear you yet. Vicky, can you hear us? Oh. Vicky? Can you hear us? If you can hear us, can you raise your hand? Can you see us? No, I don't think.
Let's see, I think I've got her on the phone here. Maybe let me somebody get her up.
Okay. Hi, Vicky, you might need to press star 6 or star 9. Oh, maybe she's there. Are you there?
I'm there. I'm here.
Hooray! Hooray! Always a little something exciting. And Vicky, could you pronounce your last name for me, please?
Sure, it's Allsacker.
Allsacker, thank you so much. So, we're happy to have you here this afternoon for Boards and Candidates Commission for your application to the Design Review Board. And I just want to introduce the rest of our team this afternoon. And Councilmember Robin Denson is here.
Hi, Vicky.
I heard your daughter's story. So I didn't have you for a moment.
It's Vicky, my neighbor.
So, our Community Development Director Katrina Knudsen's here.
Hey, Vicky.
And our interim City Clerk Josh Decker is with us.
Hello.
Hi, Josh.
So, Vicky, it's nice to see you again. We have a couple of questions for you. And I'm going to let Councilmember Denson start off with question number one.
Okay, Vicky. Why don't you introduce yourself and let us know why you'd like to be on the Design Review Board?
Sure. Yeah, Allsacker, and we moved to Gig Harbor in 2016. And I've had the opportunity to retire early. So I do have some time on my hands. And was looking for opportunities that spoke to me to give back to the community. And so when I saw that the Design Review Board opening was posted, it really, you know, tugged at my heartstrings. And so if it's the bill for me and my background, hopefully you can ask me more questions, will also lend itself where I could be a valuable member of the team.
Thank you. So do you have any knowledge of the Design Review Board and its role?
I do. I wouldn't say specifically for Gig Harbor. So I'd like to, I do follow the meeting minutes that get sent out. But I have not been to a meeting. And I think that might be because of COVID. But, um, so I have attended a few. You might have some variations. I've had to work with DRB boards at many municipalities throughout my career. I was always on the other side of the table. And so I guess I would look to learn a little bit more about if there are any nuances with the Gig Harbor Board from the members.
Okay, thank you. Number three, Robin.
Yes, Vicky, do you have any experience reading and interpreting site plans and elevation drawings?
Sure. I think on my application too, I put down my work experience. But really started out with an interior design degree, a degree in business, and then went to work at an architectural firm. So I not only coordinated those drawings for packages that went out, but I also produced those drawings. And then I became the owner's rep, and I was technically the project manager in the field. And so I always reviewed the plans prior to issuance for bid and redline things. And so, yes, I mean, all the way from civil to landscape to structural to mechanical, electrical plumbing and construction drawings, I can read those.
Great.
So this sort of sounds like the same question. So if you have anything extra to add, my question would be, do you possess any particular expertise that would benefit the board? So is there anything in addition to reading plans that you want to let us know about?
Yeah, I think the first thing that might be of interest is is my love of Gig Harbor and not just Gig Harbor, but the history of it. And so there's so much history with the harbor that has not been destroyed. And so I've lived in several communities, my own hometown being one of them, where I watched the charm slowly diminish until there was really little charm left. Gig Harbor's still got a lot of charm. So I'm a big charm fanatic. And so I have a home on the waterfront. And, of course, had to read the shoreline guidelines. And I really, really like what the city has done in terms of guidelines. And I think that's what the board is there to do, is their guidelines. And so you have to interpret as things are being proposed or brought before the board whether or not they'll fit in those guidelines with, you know, with the letter of intent. And I'm sure, like most, there has to be some flexibility. So I think that I understand code. I understand how to, in my last project, I was the program manager. And I mean, I had to orchestrate everything. And I'm all the way from the owner to the architect. And so I'm used to listening, interpreting, and communicating and figuring things out. So I guess, does that answer your question, Jenny?
It does. It does. Thank you very much.
Great, and this next question you touched on a bit in your last answer, which I appreciated. What do you find special and unique about Gig Harbor?
Well, we drove through here in 2012 for the first time. And so when my husband came home and said he had a job offer here, I said, will you have to take it? And so we went to movie night down at Donkey Creek when we were here in 2012. And everybody was so friendly and charming. And, you know, I grew up in a small town of 3,000 people. And so I like the fact that over the, you know, last four or five years, I've really gotten to know a lot of people. I mean, if you get involved and you get out, you can really weave yourself into the fabric of this community. And so there's just so much to offer in terms of farm and kindness. And it's just a wonderful city.
Well, that's great to hear.
Glad you like it. The Design Review Board meets on the second and fourth Thursday of each month at 5:00 PM. Do you have any other commitments that would keep you from attending meetings?
No.
Thank you.
Anything else, Vicky, that you would like to add? Or any questions you have for us about the Design Review Board?
I do have a question. I noticed that you listed what you were looking for in terms of members on the Design Review Board. And I'm not sure if this is just one opening or if there are other openings. But I was just curious, what's the total number? And how many members do you have right now?
So currently, there are, one, two, three, four, five, six, six members on the Design Review Board with one vacancy. And we would love to find a landscape architect to also be on the board. We are looking for, this position fills our community person. And that's what this position for. Ms. Knudsen, anything that you would like to add or any questions that you might have of Vicky?
I don't think so. I'm very pleased how much you like Gig Harbor and your experience working with people in the field. As you probably know, listening to the Design Review Board meetings, it can be very technical in nature, comparing the plans to the design manual. And it sounds like you've listened to that and believe that you could fill in and participate as part of the team, which is great. It really is one of the key, important aspects in our city of keeping Gig Harbor looking like Gig Harbor. So just really appreciate you applying for public service. And if you're on the board, you'll get to meet the wonderful staff that we have and help onboard you.
And we do have wonderful staff, so it is an important job. I think a lot of, when folks are not able to do things sometimes by code and they like to have something special, variance, or they think they have a need, then this is the place they go. And so to have your technical expertise is important, would be important, I think. So do you have any other questions for us, Vicky?
No, I just want to make sure you can still hear me. I had a pop-up.
We're all good. And did you hear everything that Ms. Knudsen had to say?
I did. And I just wanted to maybe just touch on a couple of points then before we leave. When I was just out of college, I also worked part-time at a landscape architectural firm in addition to my other jobs. So on Tuesday, Thursday nights, did I lose you?
No, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay. And Saturdays. So I'm very into landscaping and be able to interpret those kinds of drawings as well. And I really familiarized myself with the Pacific Northwest plantings, which was a challenge for me since I came from Arizona for a good part of my life. So I think the other thing was, you know, historic preservation was also really important too. So when I was in college with ASIB, we went to Minneapolis and we recorded and submitted an application for an Art Deco historical building. And while in Arizona, we did the Song Javier Mission, the Orpheum Theater. So we attempted several others. And there are some challenges, of course, to getting that done. But I'm all for that, and I get that process as well if that can be of any benefit to the board.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. So I think this will probably conclude if nobody has any other questions or any other comments for Vicky. Vicky, thank you for being here. Thank you so much for applying. You have a lot of great talents. And so I know the city will find a spot for you somewhere. So anyway, Josh, I'm not sure when we will know about the outcome of this particular position. Maybe not until next week. What are you thinking?
Yeah, I'll probably be able to notify you by early next week.
Okay.
Thank you again for applying, for loving our community. Bye now.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Bye.
Thanks.
I saw Dave pop on momentarily, so we must, hopefully he gets back on here.
Okay.
A note from James.
No, I'm not sure what's going on there. Maybe we can get him back for the next round we do.
So will we wait for him until we make a decision on this? James I'm talking about?
I don't think you need to. Because I think we know we'll have another vacancy still to fill. We can ask him to come back the next time.
Thank you.
But that other vacancy, we're hoping to fill with a landscape architect, forester, you know, person possibly.
Yeah, that's...
And you tried to...
So both of these vacancies are eligible to be filled by really any of the categories. We prefer to have a landscape architect, but we can choose from virtually any category to fill both of these positions.
Okay. Okay, Dave Christensen, where are you?
I think he's on the attendee side.
He's here. I'm trying to get him moved over.
Okay. Well, that was a nice fade-in, Mr. Christensen. How are you this afternoon? Good. I'd like to, is it all right if we call you Dave?
That is just fine.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce our committee this afternoon. And we have Councilmember Robin Denson.
Hi, Dave.
Good afternoon.
We have Community Development Director Katrina Knudsen.
Dave.
I've met before, yeah.
Interim City Clerk Josh Decker.
Hi, Dave.
Afternoon.
And myself, Jenny Wook. Hi, Dave. Hi, Dave. So thanks so much for applying for the Design Review Board. And we have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
Perfect. Robin?
Dave, I'm going to start. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you'd like to be on the Design Review Board.
I'm Dave Christian. I've been resident of Gig Harbor now for six years and am always interested in trying to serve the community. I see this as an opportunity. Some of you may know I did run for city council when I was only here two years. And I think people decided that's a little too early. And I got beat out anyway. So, and I haven't interviewed for the Planning Commission. But I had never really studied the Design Review Board as an option until I found out there was an opening coming up. And I think I've got a good enough background in being able to understand blueprints and the regulations and so on that I can be a real asset there with the Design Review Board as we're moving forward, obviously, in Gig Harbor quite rapidly.
Yeah. So following along that, do you have any knowledge of our Design Review Board and its role?
I have read through what their purpose is and looked through several of the minutes from various meetings to see exactly what they were doing, what you could pull out from that. And obviously, I kind of understand the... If you take, like, I guess the best example I could think of recently was when Joe Berzi redid her house down there in the historic district. And I think it's really important when you do things like that because I think we're going to see more of that with the value of homes going up and everything. Some of these houses that have huge pieces of property are going to be models and so on. So that's going to be a real challenge, I think, for the city.
Righty.
Thank you, Dave. And do you have any experience reading and interpreting site plans and elevation drawings?
Pardon me?
Do you have any experience reading and interpreting site plans and evaluation, elevation drawings?
One of my jobs that I did before I retired was I worked selling car washes, groundups, like the elephant car wash that we now have, which includes the recycling for the water and everything else. There's a lot of design work that goes into these. And prior to that, I was with Gulf Oil and then Chevron and working with service stations and so on. Particularly when they were pulling out oil tanks and gas tanks and going into vapor recovery and everything. So I have worked a lot with that type of thing.
Great.
Thank you. So do you have any particular expertise that would benefit the Design Review Board?
Any particular expertise? No, except that I have a real interest in serving the community. I've worked a lot with being on homeowners associations and been very active since I moved here with the Incarver neighbors. So I think I kind of represent a concerned citizen more than... I'm not an architect. I'm not a builder or anything. I don't have an agenda like that. But my agenda is what's best for the community. I hope that answers the question.
It did, thank you. And that's the position we're looking for. So, thanks so much.
Great. Well, Dave, what do you find special and unique about Gig Harbor?
One of the things my wife always says is that everything is only five minutes away. I live in Bela Sora off of Hunt and Scancy. And it is true that every time you think, well, gee, this is what we need, all of a sudden it pops up. You know, the latest example is what we really need here is a Met Market. And all of a sudden, we get a Met Market. And what we really need is a good Chinese restaurant. And all of a sudden, Dragon's Bistro opens where Panda Garden was and has great Chinese food, that type of thing. So I just love the small community feeling. I lived in Issaquah for almost 20 years and made more friends here in a couple of years than I made in 20 years in Issaquah. There's just something about this community. When people come here, they just fall in love with it. And we're the same way, so.
Yeah, new neighbors is a great way to meet people, that's for sure. For sure. The Design Review Board meets on the second and fourth Thursday each month at 5:00 PM. Do you have any other commitments that would keep you from attending those meetings?
No, I looked at what their schedule was, and there would be no problem unless I was on vacation. And our vacations usually are about three or four days, and that's it. Go away maybe twice a year.
Great, thanks so much.
Dave, is there anything else you would like to add or any questions you have for us about the Design Review Board?
No, I think I'm pretty familiar with it. And I don't know, do you know when you might be making a decision on this? Is this for the start of the year or...?
So I think we're looking for a decision sometime next week.
Okay.
And we would advise you, all the folks who've applied, then. So we have Director Knudsen here for our Community Development Director. And Ms. Knudsen, is there anything that you would like to ask or know more about?
Not at this time, Councilmember Wook. Just thank you very much for your interest in the Design Review Board, Mr. Christian. Not at this time, Councilmember Wook. Just thank you very much for your interest in the Design Review Board, Mr. Christian.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions you have for us, Dave?
Nope. Thank you, Jenny.
Alrighty, alrighty. Um, thank you so much for attending then, and we'll get back to you. I think Josh will get back to you next week.
Okay, and Happy New Year to you all.
Happy New Year.
Hey.
Bye now.
Bye. Alrighty, any deliberation we were going here with, uh, Councilmember Denson?
Well, I think Dave is awesome, and he really wants to serve the community, and I think he would be good. Um, I did think Vicki had a lot more professional experience in all of, in all of the things that the Design Review Board, um, goes after in terms of, you know, architecture and landscape architecture and codes and all of that. So I think in terms of actual experience, she's, she's got more. I would have liked to have heard from James too, though.
So I agree with you on that. Um, so this is my question, I guess, to, well, let's have a motion.
Well, I guess we need to, we just need to think about what Katrina said about, you know, we're only going to have one position left if we choose somebody, and if James comes back and we find a landscape person, and we're probably going to go with the landscape person next time, I would assume. So I don't know if we want to wait and interview James at another time, or if we want to go ahead and move forward. I mean, I thought Vicki was very, very strong.
I thought she was very strong. I, I would like to entertain him. I, I would be happy to entertain a motion for her. And put James with our next, um, group of applicants.
Okay, well, I will second that. I don't think we could do much, much better than Vicki. She sounded great.
She did. So, uh, so then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, so it looks like that, uh, we are going to, um, have, uh, refer this to the council for full appointment, I guess by the council, is appointed by council. So my question is regarding Dave and James. Is it appropriate to have, to tell them to come back for the second position, or find out if they're interested in coming back for a second position?
Uh, so we will have to re-advertise for the second position, uh, because we're closed for applications right now. So at that point, um, I think Dave would, we would ask him to reapply if he wants to be considered again. Um, James, because we had some kind of scheduling conflict, I think we could just move his application over automatically if he gets back to me. Uh, it will be a, a new round of, uh, recruitment, so technically we, we would ask Dave to reapply.
Right. A- and I have some concerns, and I'm not quite sure how to handle this, if we're really looking for, um, a landscape architect, or if we're looking something with a little more expertise that fills one of our slots on our Design Review Board. How comfortable?
Technically, we should advertise for all available appointments that we could, that we could make. So that would really open it up to the entire community again, because we can have two of those, two, two people on that board that represent people that don't really have any particular expertise.
Right.
Um, so we have that capacity, and because we have that capacity, we should advertise that capacity, even if that's not exactly what we're looking for.
Okay, I noticed that we have Marlene Drucker, whose term is up in '22, and we have Larry Bradbury, who's top is, whose term is up in '22 as well. So we could have two more positions available next year. Well, we will have two more positions available next year. It just remains to be seen, I guess, whether they will reapply.
Yes, they'll have to reapply for those positions, and I believe those are in September, so that's a little bit later next year.
Right, right. Alrighty, any other, um, any, any other information? Anybody else would like to say anything for the good of the order? Hearing nothing. Uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second. Happy New Year, everybody, and be safe out there. It's icy and slick.
All right, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Bye.
Bye.